Evening. This is the special meeting of the Warren Planning Board, Thursday, December 15th. And we're starting a bit late, 7:00, 7:10, thereabouts. We had asked that any member of the public wishing to submit written comments, do so by 4:00 PM, by emailing them to Bob Ruley, the town government. Just a note on that, from now on, we're going to ask for comments well before 4 o'clock on the day of the meeting. It's difficult to get a comment at 3 o'clock and give it the kind of consideration it deserves. So we're going to, after the meeting, after this matter, we're going to talk about the importance of getting comments and to the planning board well in advance of the meeting. And my thought is, you know, three or four days ahead of time. Because if you want to be taken seriously, slipping it under the mat, you know, at the last minute is... And I'm not blaming anybody, because that is the protocol that exists right now. But it's not fair to you or to the board. We do have a quorum. Another note is that due to the Charter Commission vote, the planning board is now seven members instead of nine, and it's seven with two alternates. So when it was nine members, a quorum was five people. Now with the new designation of numbers of planning board members, a quorum is four. So we have a quorum, no matter which way you look at it, because we have five people here today. And there is nothing on the waterfront overlay district development plan review. This is not a public hearing, and will however allow public comment. After the presentation by the applicant, comments by the board. At that point, I'll talk about the ground rules on public comment. And this is a continuance of the meeting, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. You have a motion?
Motion.
Matt, second. Ashley, all in favor?
Aye.
Old business, this is the master plan approval comprehensive permit application, AP2, blocks 21, 119, and 113 Water Street, owner applicant 119 Water Holding LLC. And I'll let the applicant take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was just brought to the attention of the applicant's team that the solicitor will be seeking additional information from the pro forma that was submitted on December 3rd. As I've just learned from the solicitor, there are some large questions that he has regarding the pro forma. As well as, and I can let the solicitor explain this in greater detail, but he also raised an issue with potential, the need for potential variance for parking. So I'm going to ask at this time, well, after the solicitor states his remarks, that development team has a presentation on a three-story project that we were prepared to go forward with. However, in the interest of being efficient and in the interest of preserving the resources of my client, I would ask for a continuance so that we can address all of the issues together.
Okay. Ben?
Mr. Chair, board members. So just to raise a couple of questions, we received a pro forma, which to the public, it's just the financials proposed by the applicant. And as I'm going through, just to point out on page two, where it says unit mix, you know, that one bedroom...
Move the mic closer.
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. So it basically shows that unit mix, that one-bedroom market rates units have a monthly rent of $1,500. The three affordable units also shows one-bed units for $1,400. That means affordable units represent a loss of $300 per month, or $3,600 per year. So basically, I don't see an explanation on this pro forma indicating why the applicant needs nine units to offset that minor loss of $3,600. That's one issue. Just need more explanation, more detail as to why they need that density. Another thing was, another question that I had was total commercial growth potential. In the pro forma, it's listed at 5,000. I assume it's a triple net lease. However, it's not stated in the pro forma. I don't see, you know, per square foot breakdown in the pro forma, or a commercial retail analysis for Water Street for that commercial property. Basically, I just look at this, and there's not enough explanations. And the applicant has the burden to prove to you that this density is necessary. And I think that's something that has to be done at this level, in this stage of approval. In addition, I looked at the parking situation in greater detail. And about two years ago, when 125 Water Street went before the zoning board for a special use permit for a restaurant there, they presented in the application a parking plan for that property. Now it's being proposed parking for the new development is now using that parking area, therefore affecting that special use permit for that particular property. So there's certainly things that need to be examined, looked at, applied for. And that's why I just don't think there's enough information before this board, before the public, to do, to give a decision at this point.
I'd also note that, you know, with our limited knowledge of what the new plan is, personally, I feel that the number of affordable units fell from 80% to 25%. Does not meet the spirit of the comprehensive permit, which is based on building more affordable units. In this case, what we actually don't, the goal further receives as a result of having fewer affordable units in the mix to go from 80% to 25% from three, in the most recent plan. So that's, that's a concern, but it folds into the pro forma in terms of the financial viability of the building. The second point that I'm making, and again, this is from my standpoint, I'm going to let the rest of the board there say as well. The structure, the look of the building, although it is shrunken size, still is not meeting the spirit and the streetscape of Water Street. And it seems, my feeling is, that more can be done with the outside of the building. This would include window frames, detailing on the building, the first floor, commercial frontage looking more like those buildings that are here. We are dealing with a historic district. A new building can be built in a historic district as long as it respects the look and feel of that historic district. And, I mean, quite frankly, it's surprising to me that the applicant who is in a historic building, in a historic district, seems somewhat tone deaf to all of the comments that have been made by the public, but also to the importance of that historic district to the viability of his own business. And it's hard to separate those two out.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to jump in. The applicant did commit in the last meeting and has more to say about the commitment to bring some of those features more into line in between this stage and final plan stage.
Okay.
That commitment has been repeated and will be expanded on in our presentation.
Okay.
But, you know...
No, that's, that's good to know. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not talking with you directly. So, and I think it's also important for the public to be reminded or, and to reinforce that fact, that we're not talking about the original design simply being shrunk down to a three-story, that we're also talking about the look and feel of the building to blend in with the historic district. So those are, those are my concerns. There's members of the...
I just want to add something with respect to the pro forma. The market rents in the pro forma are drastically lower than what the market is. So that's going to impact what that analysis is. But also, when I shared this with council and choir, there's no identification of what program, what island, how they're using, which is also going to impact what those final numbers are. I mean, I think there has to be some tightening up of that, because those numbers are going to vary greatly. $1,600 for a two-bedroom apartment on Water Street, brand new. People will kill themselves to get there.
And just, just for the record, I understand that we submitted information in advance of the December 5th meeting. So Mr. Ruley and the solicitor have had a short amount of time, a little over a week, to review that information. But had we received these comments on the 5th, or the 6th, or the 7th, we would have been prepared here today to, to deal with those concerns.
There's no blame associated with it.
No, no, no. I just wanted to put on the record that we were prepared here to go forward. I think there's some questions that need to be, that we want to address and want to answer. But out of an abundance of being efficient, I think a continuance so that we can address everything makes the most sense.
Absolutely. I just, I thought, you know, the more that we're able to give you before the next meeting, particularly from the board, the better it is.
Appreciate it.
Because, you know, it's, and as we've noted before, we're not talking about the demolition here, and we're not talking about other alternatives. We're talking about what we have in front of us in terms of what the applicant is proposing. Tyler, you?
No, I agree. And I just wanted to reiterate, I think that's what the goal was, is not to suggest that we're going to discuss one side of this plan that we haven't had you guys present, but more or less give you opportunity here, some more insight as to what we're looking for in that plan, since we have this brief time right now.
Matt?
Echo your comments. I also, curious, I have in front of me the December 15th version of master plan submission. I didn't see any differences between that and the December 5th, whether, okay. So when you were talking about the elements that you were going to present tonight, that we're talking about it being more congruent, the streetscape, I'm not, are these, are all of them that have been adopted or are planned, shown in what I have in front of me?
No, the final look, if you will, is not represented in that plan. In the October 24th hearing, we made a representation on behalf of the applicant to state that as we approach final plan, because this is a, this is a process. This is master plan stage. I feel like we sort of lost sight of the fact that we're, this is a multi-stage, multi-approval process. We're at master plan now. Typically, in, under normal circumstances, you get the master plan approval. The details, like framing, window trim, those types of details are vetted in between master plan and final. So the applicant has made a commitment to work through those details, hearing the concerns of the board and the public. Julie?
Ashley?
Is that on now? Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Brett. To further that, we absolutely intend to continue to develop this and to continue to work through the detailing and the trim on this building. The windowed styles, the muntens in the windows. We wanted to come before the board showing a three-story option, because that's something that we hadn't had the opportunity, we hadn't done previously. Make sure we were aligned in the massing, the approach to the whole project. And then in this next phase, refine it to that ability versus learn, spend all of these resources and hours getting it to that point. And then still hear that there's significant additional things that we need to modify. So for resourcing for our client, again, trying to keep that as efficient as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Just briefly, so the relief requested on the impervious coverage has increased. And I hope to hear more about that. As you know, that was a concern of mine previously. So when we come back, and I think a continuance does make sense, but at some point, I would like to know more about why that's needed and what's being done to look into alternatives. Because certainly there are alternative surfaces and materials that can be used. I know shells exist now at the Water Dog, so that's something I'm looking forward to hearing about.
Okay.
I don't have any.
No, I don't. You know, there's, there's two ways we can handle this, you know. We have received comments, and in fact, a number of those comments were on target in terms of moving this process forward. I think there's two ways we can handle this. I mean, you can comment now, but we don't really have anything to comment on. And I think it's also important to recognize what the applicant's attorney noted. This is master plan, then there's preliminary plan and final plan. And this has been a difficult process, because the planning board is sitting as not only the planning board, but also the zoning board and the town council. And quite frankly, this is a little new to us. You know, the, we don't talk about the detailing on buildings and planning. Sometimes I wish we had. If you look at tourist or two, that's an example of where the planning board had a recommendation and the zoning board went another direction entirely. And we want to get it right. And it does, you know, we'd like to feel like we're moving forward in a spirit of cooperation and based on what we're hearing, that is what is happening here. And that is where we are. So my sense would be, you know, if you feel compelled to speak now, you can...
Again, as asked for, continue. So there would be no public comment.
Oh, okay. There isn't after the continuance.
It's chairs, it's up to you. I mean, there's been no, no, no new information provided. However, I believe, and they have been said publicly last meeting, that the public would have an opportunity tonight to comment. Again, it's got to be very restricted to the changes that have been submitted by the applicant. It's at the discretion of the chair.
Yeah, okay.
And I would just suggest that we...
Balls in my court.
We haven't given the presentation of it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, from a, from, really from a sensible standpoint, I think it makes sense to have something that you're looking at and saying, this is what we're responding to. I would say that we would be open for written comment prior to the next meeting. Again, I would try and keep it within the context of this three-story building that the applicant is proposing will fit in with the streetscape based on the architectural design. So that's, that's something to keep in mind. The other thing I would ask is that you think before you write. There's nothing worse than getting a letter that feels insulting to the planning board. And we've gotten a number of those, where, you know, the process is flawed, it's been fast, it hasn't been thoughtful. Think about it. We're volunteers here. We're working very diligently on this and in a sensible manner. So when you present information as if we're lacking in either moral fiber or intelligence, you are putting yourself at a disadvantage, and you're also creating an adversarial atmosphere. And we don't want that, you know? And then the point here is, I think we have an opportunity to do some, do something right and good for the town. No decisions have been made yet. But as the applicant's architect said, you know, there, there's only so much work you're going to do. Because if it's going to get shot down, you don't want, the applicant is not going to say, hey, I just spent another 10, 20, $50,000 on a design that is never going to see the light of day. So there is a fairness factor here as well.
Mr. Chair, just for, for purposes of the record, I would object to additional, an additional comment period. I mean, we had this evening as a special meeting date certain, and we've submitted our information, and there was a deadline given for written comments to be submitted. Now we're, we're taking that and we're continuing it to some other date. We haven't determined that yet. We'll have to submit additional information to address the solicitor's questions on the pro forma. If there are additional comments after this date, I would ask that it be limited to the, whatever is provided by the applicant's team after this date.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
That would, if I followed that thought stream accurately, then that, that would limit any public comment to the three-story design.
Right.
Well, I think that's the, yes.
That's what you're proposing. You're saying that there would be...
It would. The comments on the four-story design, the comment period ended for that on October 24th. Then we submitted additional information on the three-story design, and public comment was accepted, and it was appropriate. But we're here tonight to continue this meeting after the deadline for that written comment on the three-story design has ended. So if we open it up to public comment, to whatever the new date certain is, it's as though there was no deadline.
But the deadline was only for written, not verbal?
That's what I'm addressing, yes, for, for the written comment.
So you're saying, but we were going to have public comment?
Yeah. Nobody's got a chance to...
No, no, no. I'm not suggesting that the public can't comment on what the three-story design is. I'm, I'm talking about, you just suggested a minute ago that you would extend the period for written comment. And I would suggest that that, that deadline is, it was today at 4 o'clock. If we submit additional information, then it would be appropriate to have written comment on the additional information that's submitted by the applicant's team after this date.
I believe the chair was trying to give, let you all leave to not waste the applicant's money any further, and, but also allow the people here in this room who showed up tonight to have their voices heard. Correct?
Correct. So objection noted. However, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that it's your position that the public can continue to comment strictly on what's being proposed in terms of now the new, the new design, the three-story. I have, I will say, I recommend you continue that on until the next hearing over his objection. You can allow it to happen. And then on, in January, when he puts on his public presentation, open it back up for public verbal, and we will submit all those comments at that time, part of the record. Again, strictly with the new design.
So, on the basis of council's advice, is there someone who would like to speak? If you, you need to come forward and identify yourself. And please, as noted, if it's not about the three-story design, then we're not going to hear it.
It's not about that.
Well, then, I'm not sure...
News 47 Broad Street. I just wonder if you could clarify for me, and I think some other people here, what's going to happen at the next meeting? What we're allowed to talk about? And what decisions are going to be made? Because at this point, I don't have a clue.
Okay. You know, what, what is going to happen at the next meeting would be that the applicant would do a presentation based on the waivers that we've just discussed. There's a waiver regarding the apartments on first floor in the commercial area. There are waivers about parking. There is concern about the financials that the applicant has presented to justify the shorter, smaller number of affordable units. At that time, you would also see whatever changes had been made, perhaps none, other than promises for the preliminary plan, which was just explained. So again, it would be, we've had the comments on the potential demolition. I believe there's also another waiver that we need, which was the matter of 113 Water Street, the engineering information regarding it's the demolition of that building. Okay. So, short of that, I haven't seen it.
I know that they ordered, but, I mean, if you're continuing, I mean that...
Okay. So that needs to come in as well, because I haven't seen that. And that means none of the board's seen it. At that time, we would allow public comment. And you know, it's, I've tried to be as flexible as possible here. You know, it's tough, because we, there are folks who are just vehemently opposed to any movement at all. And, you know, we can't keep hearing that, because we are, we are at a, at a point. So that would be the nature of what you could speak to at the next meeting. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, this is now, I'm assuming this is now public?
We'll put it up on the website.
Right. So you would be able to take a look at this and comment on that, presenting that information, as I said.
I don't think it's changed from what we had presented, puts on the website right now.
It's on, it's on now. And Mr. Chair, if I could just add to that, to address the commenter's question. I mean, we'll give a full presentation on the new project, the new design, how the waivers are affected.
Yeah.
You know, there were a couple of things that the board asked for at the end of the October 24th meeting. One was to ask the applicant to go back and consider a three-story design. So that's been done. The other was that you asked that the applicant address certain elements of the required findings section of the statute, and we'll address all of that as well.
Okay. No, I mean, we got to stop at the...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Janatsma, 54 Washington Street. I basically have a point of order, I think. I think a lot of us are here because of things that have happened so far. And I assume you all read the local paper. There is a fantastic piece in the local paper that lists all the things that have been said to date that are not true, at least.
I think that, you know, I'm going to have to hold...
No, 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 no. And you accuse us of being adversarial, and you're accusing us of all kinds of bad attitudes.
I was not accusing you of all kinds of bad...
Well, not me, but you are talking down...
I will say, Mr. Raitzma, that there have been statements made that have been incorrect or, or opinion that is presented as fact. Now, so, and the purpose of the public comment here is not to, once again...
No, and I'm not going to go over all that. I'm just saying that, given what has been said about inaccurate statements based on which you're moving forward, there needs to be some accounting for that. And the next thing I will get is, I have no standing. Well, I'm standing here, and I invite people to stand who think they have standing to make that point and talk about that. Not because we're against you, not because we don't respect you, not because we want to change the process, only because representations have been made that are fundamentally wrong, in our view.
And you have every right to present that information in writing. We get these, we have got...
My request is that you respond to a very cogent, succinct piece in the newspaper that lays out what for many people is a list of inaccurate statement, misrepresentations about both legal and policy issues and factual issues.
And I would say that if you get together with people and can present that in a cogent manner, as opposed to having it come in bits and pieces, some of which is, has been very helpful, as said at the beginning of this meeting, some of which has not been helpful. So there is, and one of the problems is, in this kind of a situation, as it is in a larger sense in this town, we have too many people with too many agendas. This is an opportunity for folks to unite and present the information in a cogent manner. I would welcome that. and present the information in a cogent manner. I would welcome that.
I promise you that there is a common agenda behind me. And it's not to insult anybody. It's not to think that we're always right, as some people do. It is out of concern with what we care about.
And I and I share that, as does the board.
All right, back to my, my.
You know, that's the kind of thing that's gonna create, you know, what what we're we're working in hopefully for a reasonable solution here. And I've tried to be as reasonable as possible.
Chair, I think there's no other comment.
Well, we've got one other. We do.
Hi, Karen Deon. I live on uh, Washington Street, forty seven, forty seven Washington Street. I just have a question. I live at forty seven Washington Street. I have a question. I'm not quite sure what master plan approval entails. So can you explain what the scope of that is?
It's it's the first stage of a mass, a major project, basically. Uh, for me, it feels, it lays the foundation for the project. Um, as the next stage is the preliminary stage where finite details are ironed out and decided. And then the final stage is making sure that everything is um, nice and tight and in terms of the project, everything's covered. Um, so basically, we're at the beginning stage, which I deem as probably the most uh, important stage as you lay the foundation for the entire project. So that's where we're at now.
So what are the, what's the criteria for, I mean, I I imagine everybody hesitates to go to what happens after master plan by approving master plan without having um, all the information. What's the criteria for approval for?
So this board has standards, this board has standards that are set by law to approve and to deny. Um, and that's what they have to follow is those standards. So they got guidelines in order to make that determination of whether or not this passes or fails the master plan stage.
So will we know what pieces of this plan apply for approval to master plan? I mean.
So this whole project will go for hopefully in January, uh, master plan approval or denial. A decision most likely will be made at that hearing. In addition to addressing the waivers, majority of the waivers that have been asked for from this applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
Which which, by the way, the waivers are part of the approval process. It it it, and the advice of the town solicitors office. Instead of doing this piecemeal, we've been asked to do all of it at one time within the master plan. So this is why when we don't have a waiver, enough information about the waiver, we can't move forward because we're not we're we've been instructed not to take these pieces out individually. And again, I'd say some of the comments that we've received have been very helpful in that process.
So we do have control. Let's say master plan is at the, it's um, we were talking a few minutes ago about things like the the strut, the um, details of the building and all of that. That doesn't, I know that's not addressed.
That's.
But is it too late? What is too late after master plan is approved? Do we get to fine tune the design?
It's the fine details of the project. So the project gets the approval. However, the fine details of the project get addressed one by.
Like the number of apartments?
No, that's. Yeah, correct.
That would be massive.
Again, that's the foundation. That's the foundation.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thanks.
So my name is, guess I can get close enough. Joan Coltrane. I live at one Stonegate Road. And I think the question she was asking, and certainly a question I have, is will the details of the architectural changes that will cause this new structure to appear more suitable for the historic district? Will those be approved as part of the master plan? Or will we have to hope that they're put in place as the process moves forward?
I think, again, to find details uh, for the preliminary plan. However, however, there is a finding that this board needs to make in regards to the preservation of historical property, et cetera. So they do have to address that standard at the master plan along with the preliminary plan for those finer details. As long as it passes must on the first stage, I'm also getting examined there, finer detail, yes.
Well, it was my sense from the attorney's comments that we wouldn't see those fine details um, prior to the approval of the master plan. And I really don't know how this works, but I think this is a concern for all of us.
So the board would have to be satisfied when making a decision on the master plan in terms of the preservation of the historical prop, historical properties versus the need for affordable homes locally and in the state. So they absolutely will address that within the entire.
Edition of the master plan. In other words, that those details would be included within the the the, what the building ultimately looks like.
Okay, so that we won't have an opportunity to see a rendering or any.
There's, there's a number of steps here. Master plan, preliminary, final.
And there's also a public aspect of before the preliminary plan gets approved.
Okay.
Okay, so there's also that level there.
Well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Sure. It's a complicated process.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Following up on that, because kind of that, um, the legally competent evidence to satisfy bullet E of the, you know, Rhode Island general laws that all have to be substantiated. The preservation, you you just mentioned the preservation of the, you know, the cultural features and all that sort of thing. Um, will that be? Uh, it's unclear for me what you just said, whether that will be a sight unseen thing that we will have to make a decision on uh, for this, because it's it's all, you know, it's.
Well, it's it's conditional. I mean, as as the the applicant's architect had said, and and as with the attorney, you know, there's there's only so much you can ask for, uh, you know, in terms of what is reasonable for somebody to put money into. Um, I'm not saying that I wouldn't have, if we see the details at the master plan, I would. Um, but I think that you can conditionally approve a master plan and before, and that would have to be met within the preliminary prep plan. So we would get another bite of the apple at that point.
No. Roger. Okay.
Ben, did you?
No, no, that's that's accurate. That's accurate. So while it applies, however, if you read Rhode Island general law specifically after the first sentence says all these standards were applicable. So find a detail later on and you can get into finding detail of the preservation of the historical district.
Hi, Carol Meeker, fifty four Washington Street. I just want to make certain that I understood Ben properly and where this board is going. So public comment that's written will also be continued?
That was my recommendation, correct?
Is that something the board is going to take?
As after the applicant makes his presentation, there's going to be oral comments allowed. And that's how I made my decision.
But you'll also be continuing the written comment?
Correct.
So to continue on this meeting.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Specifically with the changes in the project.
And when you say fine detail, does that mean things like the orientation of the building?
No, that, uh, we're we're talking about.
You're gonna, you're gonna approve the, you're gonna approve the orient.
We're not, we're not, I'm not telling you we're gonna approve anything. Um, that's what's would be before us in the master plan.
But what's after that is only fine details. I'm trying to understand what fine means.
Architectural, uh, aspects of the the outside of the building would not be a change in the number of apartments or the positioning of the building. That would be, that would be part of the master.
So the massing, the orientation, the doing away with the curb cut on Water Street, you're all, you're doing that next time?
Uh, the curb cut is another matter entirely, but the the rest of the stuff that you mentioned, yes, that would be under the master plan.
So I think the the easiest way to look at it is right now, they're asking for for variances within the existing zoning. And we have to weigh, do those variances meet with the law? That is, if anybody wants to see it, is it's on the website as well as this plan. And so we have to decide that does, do the variances contain with this law, right? So right now, there's zoning. Now, the one thing you do have to remember is within Warren's zoning, if the applicant were to meet every zoning requirement, they could put up a steel box and we can't say anything about it.
Of course you could.
Nope, because there is no zoning in here that says the aesthetics of a building count against it.
So.
There is no design requirements in the historic district. And so right now, for the master plan, we are looking at the size, the scale, the lot coverage and the zoning, which you can, in those variances, they're all on the website.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, no, I think the elephant in the room here for.
Say your name.
Oh, Dave Bolster, fifty three State Street. Uh, I also serve on the Historic Commission. Um, I think the elephant in the room here, while it might be interesting and entertaining to talk about the new building a lot, is the fact that we're talking about before that tearing down, demolishing two historic buildings that are listed on the National Register and that this community.
Respectfully, may I stop you there again? This has to be limited. I, using my discretion, gave the the okay for the chair to use his discretion to allow comment. I'm uh, it's crossing the line in terms of items that have been discussed and not subject to being.
Okay, I'm not going to get in, that's fine. And I'm not going to get into the details of all of that. Um, my, it's a big picture question is that the Historic Commission was charged with creating a report about the importance of those buildings by a certain deadline, which we did. And uh, this community en masse is very concerned about the fact that those buildings might not survive this process and that the developer has to prove that he is in some sort of financial hardship in order for that to happen. That is the elephant in the room and that is the primary concern of this community long before we get to discussing the window trim of a futuristic building. So.
Again, I get, you know, I appreciate we had to say that.
I just wanted to make that comment.
I will just tell the board, just please, um.
Want to lose that.
Not record, um, just areas of information coming in, got to the um, the additional.
By the way, I will say that that report from the Historic District Commission, which appeared on our dais the day of the meeting was very well done. It's unfortunate it didn't come earlier, but it was nonetheless.
It was submitted by the deadline five days.
No, I.
As we were told, as we were instructed.
I'm not, I'm not holding you accountable. I was praising you for the work that you did. Good God. Okay, I I'm just saying that it was, it was a good piece, well thought out and it impacted the way that certainly I thought about this issue and I'm sure the rest of the planning board as well. You know, we're not. It was a good, good thing. No, I guess not.
Mr. Chair, is that, is that uh, uh, report that was submitted to the board? Because I'm not, I'm not sure we have a copy of that.
Thank you, Jay. You had that last.
Spiral bound.
Okay.
Uh, number of maps.
Okay.
Okay.
Linda McGathlin, forty two Market Street. And I have a question about when the demolition question will be looked at, will be, will be, that be part of the master plan?
Yes, that will, that uh, under the advice of the chancellor, sir, we are, all of those elements have to be with, are are decided in the master plan decision.
So cur, so the current master plan proposal in includes a proposal for the demolition.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jan Mona, sixty seven Water Street. Um, with all due respect to the applicant, does the town have any recourse on, and this is providing his plan goes forward? Um, if there's any deviation to um, materials or material shortage and he uses something different and the building actually comes out looking completely different than what it was supposed to, like ninety nine Water Street? And my second question, um, Ms. Madeira said that.
Well, wait a minute, let me deal with it one at a time. I'm not, ninety nine Water Street.
So is my just, my understanding that ninety nine Water Street um was designed one way and built another and there was nothing that the town could do after the fact? I understand that we might have material shortages and they may expect something that they can't get.
I think that that's a, you know, my understanding of how the planning board sitting as a zoning board is, and I'm actually kind of pleased that we are in this space, is that if there's a decision made about the way that something has to look, yes, the town has to enforce it. I can't speak to a situation that I know nothing about, um, and that I did wasn't involved in the decision making process, but I can say that the planning board sitting as a zoning board in this particular case would insist that all of the detail, all of the details as determined would be seen through. Um, and so there would be no deviation. Unless, you know, I mean, if there there is the possibility that some material wouldn't be available, but it was, this is, you know, part of life, so but there's not going to be a lot of give and take on significant elements.
And so my other question is, it was my understanding that the town kind of um, uses the state law. So Ms. Madeira said that somebody could put a tin can up in historic district and there would be nothing that anyone could do, but is that what the state law says? Because having had some interaction with the zoning, um, I was told that you guys.
Certainly, um, as the applicant um, said in, I think it's initial presentation, um, if he didn't um, require any um, waivers and variances, he's entitled to put a structure there as long as he's within the confines of zoning and building regulations. What that project is, I don't know, would really have to limit. But he's here because he's looking, he needs waivers and variances.
Yeah, just that is my question.
Go ahead. Yeah, so I I think what he, she and he is trying to say is that the elements of our zoning that are not specific, such as like a particular type of siding or a particular type of window treatment, it's not required on our zoning, would not be a duty of them, of a, of an applicant that does it, that submits a project that doesn't require any variances. You understand, like, they they could build something and it could be, just like they could paint it whatever they want. It could build it out of any material that is permitted, which if we don't have any restrictions, then it could be anything. And she was giving an illustration of something that would be, you know.
Really.
Certainly, yeah, right.
Warren may not have restrictions, but does the state of Rhode Island have restrictions if you're building in a historic?
It's a municipal decision.
Correct. So Warren's ordinances, building regulations, all enabled by Rhode Island general law. And through amendments to adoption of different um, ordinances, et cetera, throughout the years, that is currently our effective law for the town of Warren. In other words, they give us the the guidance and also the authority to pass ordinances um, in order to for land use or historic, et cetera. It's our duty in Warren through the years to continue to evolve these amendments as necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Chairman Massey and the rest of the board here. Um, I just have a quick question. Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, Spencer Morris, um, eighteen Cole Street and two forty one Water Street, uh, town of Warren. Um, I just have one question and that is, um, uh, first of all, I understand that um, there's a lot of elements in this, in this master plan proposal requiring multiple decisions on various points. Um, however, all decisions can't be made at once. And um, the first decision, I would assume, would be the demolition. Uh, issue of the demolition. And I, my question is, um, should the board decide to um, deny the demolition permit? Um, is it then game over? Um, or does the client have, or the applicant have a, another opportunity to present an alternative proposal?
I think it goes to an appeal at that point.
That's just hypothetical. Um, it it's actually not going to go procedurally in that manner. Um.
I guess then my question is, in what manner will it go procedurally? So, I guess then my question is, in what manner will it go procedurally? Hello, hello. Yeah, what, so if, so what is the procedural matter that it will go in?
So basically, um, if there is, if there's a, if there's a, a motion for approval, certainly the person or member makes that motion has to not only, in my opinion, um, hit all the standards that are required by law, but also address the relief that is being requested for the application. If that answers the question.
I'm not sure that is.
So basically, they, if there's a motion to approve, okay, the master plan application, within finding a fact, within that conversation.
I'm sorry, to approve the master plan.
Within that
Including all of the elements of the master plan.
Correct.
Okay.
That, my advice would be to also speak about, and I think naturally they'll talk about the requests. Each request in terms of a waiver or variance that is being asked by the applicant. At the same time, if there's a denial, motion to deny, there's also, I would also ask what, what is the reasoning for the denial? And I would infer, not infer, but I would assume that that motion is because of all the requests and variances that are, that are being asked for are not appropriate or don't outweigh the need for local, um, and state affordable houses.
So if one aspect of the master plan is denied, it's game over?
It's, it's not game over. If there's an approval and there's an outstanding, um, variance or a condition placed on it, it's certainly appealable to the state.
So the, again, it, I just find it confusing because it seems like it's all in or not. I mean, if you have a, if you have a, um, demolition, uh, permit and game moves forward. If you don't, game over. No.
I, I don't want to give a, a
I don't, procedurally.
I definitely answer to that because we're gonna have to see how it's played out and how the motion is made either for or against, and how that member, um, follows the rule in terms of making, finding the facts and how addressing the requested, um, relief.
And we're still waiting to, for further findings of fact on one thirteen. You know, today, as of today.
Sure, no, I understand. There's a lot more to consider.
Yeah, so we can't, you know, and, and I, I know what you're asking. It's a hypothetical, you know, there are
Reasonable.
There are possibilities for appeal on both sides, both the applicant and opponents. Uh, through the state housing authority and then, you know, potentially through the Superior Court. Um, that's the nature of the beast.
Okay, I, I guess, final comments, just it seems like, um, if you get a denial on the demolition, then that's it. I mean, it just seems like that's the, the make or break on this.
I'm not sure it is.
Uh, yeah, I'm not gonna, not gonna address that particular question. Again, this is limited to just hypothetical for what the applicants look at. It's just, it's all speculative. We can't answer that. Correct.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sorry.
Hi, uh, Joseph Gilberti, uh, nineteen Sisson Street, um, just regarding the question of, or, you know, the statement that the board and the zoning board can't do anything about the look of, of a building. Um, I've spent a lot of time in the last week looking at the, the zoning ordinance online. Um, and I'd seen in the statement of purposes for the zoning ordinance, um, says the regulations set forth in this ordinance are designed to address the following purposes, one of which is E, providing for the protection of the natural, historic, cultural and scenic character of the town of Warren. Um, so I guess my question is just how the statement that the, the zoning board can't make any, you know, decisions based on what something looks like uh, plays against.
Mr. Chair, I would again say that this is very limited, um, to any comments about um, the, the changes of the project. It's not appropriate to continue um, with legal questions or hypotheticals and also now, um, parts of our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, it, it's just a question. My apologies.
My name is Ned Connors. I live on Dyer Avenue in Riverside, Rhode Island. Uh, I wanted to speak briefly about the detailing that we've been talking about on this building. Oh, step back, thank you. The, um, if I can refresh your memory, when the first audit, uh, architect's rendering of the four-story building with the mansard roof was shown, there was a spontaneous guffaw in the audience. I don't think that guffaw was saying, we're concerned about the mountains and we're concerned about the detailing of the windows. I think there was concern that this building was a monstrosity, was absolutely out of character.
I need to stop you there because that's a, the four-story that is no longer on the table.
My point that I'm about to make is that it's a three-story version of the same thing. It is utterly inappropriate to the scale, the look, the roof configurations of the buildings along Water Street and the historic district. So I think that's something we need to consider in terms of what we've just been told that at the next meeting, our input is being limited to table crumbs on this building.
I wouldn't say that. I mean, I think you can, I, I think that would also be a time when you could look at the building as it exists and present that information. I mean,
Well, thank you.
That's the first time I've heard but, and, and it's, you know, and we're hearing it.
Yeah.
Um, that the three-story is as bad as the four-story. That has not been what has been communicated, but you know, if that's the case, you know, and there is that feeling out there, then that's um, important.
Well, I've never heard a single citizen speak about window mountains.
No, but what we've talked about, Ned, is the look of the streetscape.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, this building was deteriorating for thirty years and nobody said boom.
But that's in tongue of another star.
And the, the nature of Water Street, there are some really ugly-ass buildings out there. And they need to be addressed, and I would like to see the, the folks who are concerned about historic preservation inventory those buildings. Take a look at that. But a lot, some of it is details. It's not, you know, it
A lot of it isn't.
But it's, it's, the deep, the devil is in the details, as I say, and if you
I don't think the devil's in the details. I think the devil's in the entire concept of the building.
Okay, well, that's your opinion.
I've been an architectural historian for thirty years.
And, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that there have been changes that have taken place. And, you know, one of the things that we're under the constraint of is the comprehensive permit, but we are, but, you know, we're, we're not bending over and taking the comprehensive permit, you know, that is not where we're going with this.
I agree, and I, I
Where we're trying to be fair and also look at affordable housing and more. I mean, this is, I, I mean, we have some issues and I hope that everybody here has written to June Speakman, Walter Feelad, and, uh, and Jason Knight about the fact that we're in this position, where a comprehensive permit can go through in a way that a, an ordinary proposal wouldn't. You know, this is there, there is reason to be angry at the legislature for, for putting us in this position.
Bob said that on the first night. That's a deeply flawed piece of legislation.
You know, it's, it's, it is a matter that, that we're trying to balance. You know, nobody wants to go to court. You know, there, the, the planning board, prior to my coming on board, I think had at least six cases, if not more, that went to Superior Court that cost the town quite a bit of money. That's our money, you know, as taxpayers. I'm not, that's not, we're not letting that be the, the deciding factor in this decision. But it certainly plays a role.
Yeah.
And is there a compromise possible here that, that would maintain the integrity of Water Street? I don't know. I'd like to think there is, but I, I can't say with a surety that that's the fact. Any else have any? Trying to make sure on that.
Well, I, I think that it's correct that we should discuss this with our congressional delegation. That could take years. We don't have that time for one nineteen and one thirteen Water Street. We just don't have time. Uh, i- if I can jump to the, the next point I make, it had to, uh, to do with standing. In the December second letter, the response to comments that the attorney submitted to, to planning, uh, it was said that none of us who have spoken from the floor have any standing, any qualifications to be speaking.
Respectfully, again, I would just give an opportunity just to comment on the changes that have been presented. Anything that's, the attorney presents at the next hearing is certainly um, open to any type of feedback, um, advice, recommendations, as to any new information.
I think what I'm saying has everything to do with it.
I understand, we talk about standing, which again is a legal concept. Um, that's not the point of my recommendation to the board, just to allow people that were told here that you are given an opportunity just to speak about, um, the changes in the project.
Okay, let me refine my point then, which I think is in the spirit. I think it's in the spirit of what you're saying. When the Warren Waterfront Historic District was established in nineteen seventy-five and revised in two thousand and three, it was determined by National Park Service and HPC, the State Commission, that it was significant on the state level. That gives every Rhode Islander standing to stand in this room and comment on adverse effects to the Warren Waterfront Historic District.
Let's, let's stop that. Stop that.
Here's the thing, every Rhode Islander can give money to the historic preservation. Not one person who stood up in this room and said, hey, I'll buy that building and I will preserve it for over, probably at this point, one point five million dollars. So
Was the opportunity given to do that? That's, that's
Donate.
I'd, I'd like to bring the temperature down here.
Yeah.
I, I think that's enough. I appreciate your comments.
One final
I, we've gotten past the time. Um, I will say that we have never said to anyone here who don't have standing. We have taken
The attorney.
I don't, you know what they said, what you said. Please sit down.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address that real quick. I never said, nobody here has standing. The standing comment I made has to do with taking an appeal. You have to meet certain standards to take an appeal. You need standing. Those were, those were the, those were the comments. At, at this time, I'd like to renew, it was just a request for a continuance here tonight, and I want to be clear. At no point did I object to anybody's public comment. I would think that folks can make public comment about the three-story approach and our revised submittals at our continued date certain. My objection had to do with extending the deadline for written comments, the deadline having been set for today.
And I, and I will just say clearly, everybody whose comment has come in, I have read them at least twice. I've read the letters in the newspapers. I would assume that most of the members of the planning board have too, and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, those have impacted the process. It's not, these are, these were not, you know, you didn't say something and it fell on deaf ears. You didn't send something and it wasn't read. We've read them, we've listened to them, and we're acting on many of those, and that is the fact. That is the truth. You know, it's not like whose idea of what fact is a fact. That, there's, it's incontrovertible. So I think what we're gonna do is close the meeting at this point. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
Uh, Ashley.
Motion to continue.
Mr. Chair. Motion to continue, well, close the
Yeah, correct. You need a, a motion to accept, um, the applicant's along this to, um, continue this to, uh, the end of January, um, to be heard, date certain at the next planning board meeting. In January. January thirteenth to the meeting.
At the end of January, sometime at the end of January.
Correct, that's just because of weather conditions, et cetera, gives the
Twenty-third, but if there was a
We need a continuation on the extension from January thirteenth.
Okay. Ashley, uh, second, Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yeah, he put it
Okay, anything further? Okay, we're gonna, we've got some administrative matters. Okay, uh, could I have a motion for a five-minute reset?
Second.
Five-minute reset.
Second. Aye. Aye.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, in terms of administrative matters, there's no new business. Administrative matters, perhaps one of the most important administrative matters we've ever had here, uh, the planning board and the whole time I've been here. And it's the fact that, um, uh, Bob, who has put in yeoman-like service for both the planning board and for this town, uh, has taken another position at, um, a town in SJS. Um, he, uh, has done really terrific work here. He's brought national attention to this town. He's also been a terrific support and help to me and to the planning board over the course of the time that he's been here. Um, he's brought a level of professionalism. Uh, it, the, the planning board has gone through some, some iterations while I've been here. We had a really good planning director just before Bob, but she got bounced up to town manager and because she's not willing to leave, it doesn't look like Bob's gonna be able to move into the captain's chair.
Um, never wanted the captain's chair.
But Bob started as a grant writer actually here. And, um, you know, through his expertise in writing those grants, was recognized, uh, as the talent that he is. And, um, he's been a great asset to the town and he will be sorely missed. Um, and so Bob, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that, Fred. I mean, this wa- was not an easy decision. Um, I love Warren. I mean, I used to tell people this was the best job I'd ever had, least amount of money I ever made, but still the best job I'd ever had. Um, but notwithstanding that, um, I wasn't actively looking for a change. Um, I think over the last couple of months, this became less fun and it became more of a J O B and I never wanted it to be a J O B. Um, and I'm proud, I mean, when I heard some comments tonight, like, you're still here? I mean, really? I mean, E- E- Ethan asked me to do an interview and I'm like, I really don't want to do that, but and part of me is like, you know, I, I bring in six million dollars a year in federal funding. People don't realize that and, you know, so it's a little bit insulting. Um, but I'm proud of what I've accomplished. If I didn't have the opportunity that Kate Michelle afforded me to have the guardrails be this wide and the toll gate up, I wouldn't have been presented with the opportunity that I was given. And I wasn't looking for something. I was approached. Um, the serendipitous part of this is, is I'm going Bridgewater, Mass. Uh, I went to college in Bridgewater, Mass. This is where it started for me. Um, it was a college then with three thousand students. It's a university now with eleven thousand students. I'm gonna be sixty-five in June and this is probably gonna be the last real job that I have. And for me to work in a university, college town is, uh, really exciting. I mean, I, I've, I think I've, I'm proud of the fact that I've put Warren on the map for addressing sea level rise, climate change, economic development and revitalization. I don't feel like I've ever got the acknowledgement and the support and the leadership from certain entities in town that are necessary and that, I mean, you know, the hardestest conversation I ever had was to tell Kate I was leaving. She's a friend, smartest person I know. Um, but you have to make changes, right? And I'm looking forward to the challenge of going someplace different. They seemed excited to have me and I'm excited to do it. You know, Bridgewater is similar to Warren in a lot of ways. Rural, but it's got a historic downtown, it's got a university, has a prison. I got thrown off the prison once because I was out, you know, taking pictures black and white because, you know, I'm, we, it wasn't legal then, but I was there. But, I mean, so, um, you know, it's exciting for me, but I mean, you know, I, I think I put Warren on the map for being advanced in addressing climate change and sea level rise and I'm proud of that, but, you know, when it stopped being fun, stopped being fun. And, um, you know, I, I have a good friend that said, you know, looks like you got bounced back in your step. And I do, and, but everyone in this building is a friend of mine. This board, I'm proud of. Other boards, not so proud of. I don't stop those, so. Um, and, you know, this, this project has been enlightening to me that, you know, and I'm just gonna make this statement because I'm on my way out. There's been a lack of leadership from our elected official. Ah, you can put it on tape, I don't care. Uh, you know, that, you know, if you're a state official and you're advocating for affordable housing and you're not taking a petition on this, shame on you. I mean, shame on you. This isn't your community. And I've testified before those meetings. And, and I leave, uh, this speaker in Boston, August day, municipalities need to do more about affordable housing. I've been upfront on different things we can do on affordable housing with respect to what we're doing in Metacom, consulting, form-based code than anyone else in the state. So it's frustrating and, you know, but it gets to that point, it's time to go. Because you're you're bitter and it's gonna take a lot to change it, so. I would, I, I've been quite honest that, yeah, money is part of it. Money's fifty percent of it. I mean, and that's sad. That should be sad. And, but I respect all of you. Uh, I told the manager, I mean, I've got certain grants that are out there from the federal government. Please fire that I, you know, I will stop on my way home. I'm out of state now, it's not a conflict of interest, I will help you. And I will continue to support this board if you need feedback, but, um, six, seven weeks ago, I would have never had this conversation. But I just want to thank you all for supporting what I'm doing. As Allison and I have talked, Allison is, uh, gonna come in on Monday. She is going to act as administrative officer at least for January, February. Um, her and I are racing to get the final elements drafted for the comprehensive plan. The form-based code is drafted, so you will all have that. Uh, I think market, the Metacom needs to continue. The market street piece really needs to continue and that's less of you, that's more of the sea level rise, but you know, as I said to Kate, if somebody comes in and makes the Metacom team better than I ever imagined it, I will be the first one to applaud them and congratulate them. Because I'm not moving. I still drive down that road every morning and I'll be coming home every night and I wanna help and so I just want to thank you all for when, you know, I had my first, you know, oh, shut up. I had my first conversation with Bridgewater. I'm not a booker, so. But it came a morning after an uncomfortable comes meeting, so there's something deeper. So I had a meeting in this building, like, you're a booker, doctor, etc. For me, this is a conversation because I'm gonna acquire a taste. I'm not sure I'm ever gonna. And you know, it, this has to work and, you know, I don't like to be micromanaged. I, you're looking for an out-of-the-box thinker. I challenge you to find somebody that thinks farther out of the box than I do. Um, and, you know, we had a nice conversation and our meeting turned into a two and a half hour. So it, it felt right and it's, for me to walk away from Warren breaks my heart, really does. But at the same time, I don't want to go home angry, you know, and so I just want to thank you and I'm sorry, um, but I'm here.
Bob, I'm, I'm sorry I had to clear the room before that. I mean, because you do deserve, uh, recognition. Um, not only were you a good administrator, but you were a great educator. You know, I mean, I've been an educator most of my life and in one form or another. And I learned so much from you. Uh, I became better in this job and better at how I deal with people too. Um, and I'm a lot older than you are.
I'm much.
But, uh, the, the, the sea level rise, those, the, the, the targeted and focused discussions that we've had about those have been really informed a lot of what, how I think and consequently, I think how the, 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 the rest of the board thinks. Uh, you've been, uh, as I said, you know, you've been a, a boon to this town and a real asset. And, you know, we're, um, I didn't get a chance to write a letter of recommendation because you made your decision so quickly, but, um, I, I, you know, I certainly would sign your praises as I have to other people in town because, um, I, it, it's too easy for folks to take these individual situations and blow them up into, uh, you know, a, a condemnation of process. And the process here has always been fair. And I mean, it's you and it's Ben and it's Tony and it's all the staff that, that have really helped us, um, produce and in truth, a very fair and honest and well-thought-out, uh, decisions. So, you know, that's relatively new and it's, and it's, uh, the, in, in good part, um, at your doorstep.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I wouldn't have this opportunity had I not been able to do what I've done here. And, you know, as I went through this process, you know, I always told people, I said, you know, I'm an office of one. I mean, I literally legitimately am. And we had a conversation yesterday, I think, well, if you're an office of one, what's your management style? I'm like, probably three, four, because I'm a little- But no, I mean, I, you know, I think that, you know, again, we have accomplished, I, I, I use the term often that when Kate and I, Kate was here a little bit before me, but when we got here, Warren was a place people drove through. Warren is now a place people drive to. And I take a lot of pride in that. So when I hear cat calls that you're still here, I'd say, that's ignorance. That's just ignorance. I mean, you know, the, the amount of money that I've brought in annually through grants, which I wasn't paid to be, I was a grant writer for about three weeks. And then I was head of the wastewater management district. And then Kate became town manager and I still was the grant writer. Then I was wastewater manager district and then I was the planner. And I also staffed economic development and I covered zoning and I cover the, uh, Warren Historic District and Arts and Culture and Discover New Core. And, you know, that got to be a little bit old. And, you know, so a- at the same time, as I said, you know, I have an incredible relationship with our federal delegation. That's brought in oodles of money. You know, I brought in, you know, I brought in, I was a project manager to finish up the wastewater treatment plant. That came in three million dollars under budget. Because I had that experience and we were able to put in scope that we had taken out originally. And we did energy improvements there that we had, uh, interest deferral that for half of the cost, instead of being five, half a million dollars, we got it done for two hundred and fifty million dollars because we had money. And I don't talk about that. That's just what I do. And I've been doing this a long time and, you know, and I want it to be fun and, um, it didn't, it wasn't fun anymore. And, and I, and that could have been corrected easily because it wasn't a money thing, you know, but I'll shut up.
Well, thanks again, Bob. Um, and, uh, I hope you do that interview with Ethan because I think-
I have mixed emotions.
Yeah, well, you know, it-
I like to take the high-
Of course, you know, I, I, you know, a lot of us do things and never get credit for them and I, you know, that on one hand, it's like, you know, I, I've been that way my whole life. I don't, I don't really, that's not why I'm in it. I'm not in it for the recognition, but I'm also not in it for the damnation and that's-
I've been to my bank several times and I said, do you have a Bataboy line or a Bataboy line? And they said no.
Well, thanks again. And one last administrative matter. Um, you know, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this business of getting the stuff at the last minute is just not, you know, good. Um, it's nobody's fault. It's been, um, but we've gotten loose in some ways about accepting information, you know, day of or, you know, one day before. I'd like to change it to at least four days in advance of the meeting.
Well, I, I just do what you want. I, and I will tell Allison, I always, and I follow what Kate did, sends the agendas out on Thursday. So I would say that by the end of this, on Wednesday, before the meeting, that people get coming. And so when the packets go out to you on Thursdays with the agenda, that that information can be included.
Yeah, and I, I think we need to formalize.
So, so is there a particular, uh, regulation that we're, we're gonna have a vote on?
Oh.
Okay, so-
Basically a voting to you says, and I'll get the form.
I'll say so. Right, so I, I think that the day before the agenda goes out is the right day. I want to get the agenda and anything else I have to consider before, I mean, sometimes you get this stuff Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
But Monday, I mean, my workday starts Monday. I'm, I'm in my office until six fifteen when I come here, right? I'm not, uh, and, and certainly I don't want to spend Sunday, you know, doing this stuff. We're all volunteers. Uh, you know, I, I have time Friday. It's a good day. It's the end of the work week. That's the best time for me to digest everything, maybe Saturday morning.
I've always, Kate and I have always given you the agenda.
Yep.
One day in advance for the hours.
Right, um, I mean, the agenda's one page, but I mean, like, stuff that comes along with it, the, the town, whatever it is.
So, I mean, let's, uh, let's, uh, could I have a motion to, uh, Ashley? Uh, second, the, the motion is to, uh, have all materials to the, uh, by four o'clock on Wednesday. Prior to meeting. Now, I mean, so we're saying-
The Wednesday, immediately preceding, uh, the, the meeting.
So it's four days, not counting the weekend.
Right, you don't count the weekend.
Right, so it's four days prior.
Don't we have it on the fourth, Monday?
But if, if for any reason it doesn't go on a Wednesday because like we had a special, I think, the week before. It should be four days-
Yeah.
Uh, before-
Four working days.
Four, four.
Business day. Right.
Business. Yeah, four business days before a planning board meeting. Uh, all, all comments, written comments need to be, need to be submitted to the town.
Okay, uh, we've got a motion and a second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, um, then, uh, a motion to close the meeting and adjourn. Uh, Ashley, second. Matt, all in favor?
Aye.